We're good, all right. Good evening, welcome to the April 12th, 2022 Meeting of Manchester Town Council, beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. First order of business is the approval of March 8th minutes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we approve the March 8th minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Receipt of the February 22 Treasury's report. So we have two Treasurers' reports this month.
Yep. I'll make a motion, we receive the February 2022 Treasury's report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion seconded, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then same, continuing for March 2022 Treasury's report. Do we have a motion there?
I'll make a motion, we accept the March 22 Treasury report.
I'll second it.
Motion seconded, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving right along. Mayor's report, we do have, we're missing Councilman Richardson tonight, I did speak with him. He has a work event that he was not able to get around. Other than that, everybody's here, and obviously we have a quorum. Yard waste pickups on Wednesdays through November. Are those active now?
Yes.
Okay. So we have yard waste pickups that started. Grass clippings, leaves, small branches, not in excess of three feet or four inches in diameter. Armful loads, please, so Kelly and Steve too. These are the ones that our folks are picking up, right? So please help out our employees and make these something that they can pick up easily and throw in the back of the truck. No trash, pet waste, rocks, anything like that. Yard waste should be placed in large craft paper bags or in a container to be dumped. No plastic bags, plastic bags obviously are not yard waste. April 15th, this Friday, our office is closed, it's Good Friday. Brush pickup, which is different, and this is what's picked up by Hughes, correct? So we've had some questions around this.
Actually, the weekly, it's the opposite.
I think we were back.
Okay, we're, okay. Okay, I'm getting confused too.
Yeah, because Wednesdays, they come around and do that, and then it's our guys, right?
So brush pickup, slightly larger items. The pile can't exceed four feet in height, four feet in width, I'm sorry, eight feet in length. Each property's going to receive one brush pickup, so if you have a tree that went down or something that you cut down, you can drag that down, cut it in towards the road would be easiest. That is April 19th, which is next week. Bulk trash pickup, always right around the same time, April 20th. Call Hughes, numbers here at the town if you can't find it. Water bills are out, and they are due this, April 30th. Charlotte Colette Memorial Scholarship, those applications are out there. Due by May 1st, please get an application from the guidance counselor or here at Town Hall, we can provide those electronically as well, and I'd love to see our town students applying for that. That is all I have, I'll turn it over to the town administrator.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council members of the community. You have in front of you the March 2022 Administrative Report. The first thing is one of my action items. You have in front of you the final draft of the Joint Use Agreement between the Town of Manchester and North Carroll Rec Council. I've included all the changes that were requested over the last several months. That is the final, final draft copy. The underlying portions, of course, are the ones, the items that have been changed. So that is an action item for, for tonight. The Fiscal Recovery Funds partnering with Carroll County, I talked a little bit about that at our budget workshop. Five of the eight municipalities did respond back to the county by the March 11th deadline. Our water main replacement project did rate in the top three. The commissioners didn't commit to anything, and they are requesting more information in regards to prioritizing our projects, which we did. They have that in hand over there, and they will also be reaching out to the three municipalities that did not respond. So our information is in, it's in the commissioner's hands, whatever happens, happens. Under Code Enforcement and Zoning, you have in front of you the monthly code enforcement update. Chapters 81 and 122, give you an update on that. We continue work on these projects, on these updates. We do have a meeting scheduled for April 26th with our internal work group and also the town attorney. That's a, that's a huge undertaking combining those chapters together, but I think the end product will be, be worth it. No change on the Lippi Old Town property. Equine Meadows, we did have a work session on March 21st. There were numerous items that were discussed, but the main focus was on the off-site stormwater management system. The water coming off-site, going down Westminster Street, and then heading down to Westchester Square. Under miscellaneous items, yesterday Kelly and I had a meeting with Mr. Stephen Israel and Mr. Tom Develbus in regards to the archaeological artifacts that were found in Pine Valley Park. Since 2007, over 6,000 artifacts have been located in the area dating back 4,000 years. Currently, Mr. Israel is storing these artifacts at his home, with the exception of some of the items which are currently on display at the Historical Center. These gentlemen brought to our attention that we may, as a town, want to loan these artifacts to the Maryland Archaeological Conservation Laboratory for storage and safekeeping. This would be done with the understanding that the town, at any time, could pull those artifacts out and put them on display or use them for educational purposes in the future. I do recommend that we do this, it'd be at no cost to the town. I'm just concerned that these artifacts would be placed somewhere, and possibly 25, 30, 40 years from now, they will be thrown out. Mr. Israel did an outstanding job on documenting these, these items, and we want to keep them in place, in a safe keeping place. Also, it's not on my report, but next month you should have the updated substance abuse policy in front of you, as well as the no smoking or smoking prohibited in our parks and recreation areas. So actually, I have two action items. The first one is the Joint Use Agreement with the Rec Council, and the second is basically a vote to place those artifacts at the Maryland Archaeological Conservation Laboratory.
All right, so let's handle this one at a time. Everybody had a chance to review the Joint Use Agreement? It's been a discussion for a while. I'm pretty comfortable with it. Ways down. Long, long time coming. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the Joint Use Agreement between Town of Manchester and North Carroll Rec Council for use of the fields?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Joint Use Agreement between Manchester, Town of Manchester and North Carroll Rec Council for use of the fields.
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded, any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Carries. And then, yeah, this other one, I feel comfortable with it being a vote as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do we have any thoughts, or is there a motion to move forward with placing the artifacts found, found at Pine Valley Park with the Maryland Archaeological Conservation Laboratory for Storage and Safekeeping?
Quick question, where is that located?
That was my question.
Like, is it convenient, or is it? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, if you don't know, it's okay.
I can't remember.
Was it?
I thought it was.
Was it?
Oh, DC.
Okay.
Where did you think?
No, I didn't think it was, I thought it was somewhere around Baltimore.
That's all right, don't worry about it.
It's not just the artifacts, it's record-keeping stuff too, so it's a mound of information that needs to be stored somewhere, and I can't remember where it was.
It says Jefferson Patterson Park. Jefferson Patterson Park?
It's in the city.
That's what it looks like.
Where Patterson Park is.
Okay. That's what it looks like. Okay. I'll make a motion that we have our six, over 6,000 artifacts that have been located, stored at the Maryland Archaeological Conservation Laboratory for safekeeping.
I'll second the motion.
Motion seconded, any other discussion? I think it was Chris and Vince.
Chris seconded.
No.
No, it was, I, I made the motion.
It was Janet and Chris. Janet and Chris, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public Works report, Rodney.
Good evening, mayor and town council, please see the monthly water and wastewater data report for March 2022. Also for Public Works, the AT&amp;T antenna modifications for the York Tower. Nothing new to report on this list, I heard last correspondence, correspondence was tentatively in May. The Delwell Interior Piping Rehab Project, the piping is at 100% complete. This was a contractor, the outside contractor, first-class mechanical. The interior work is a work in progress, town staff is handling this. The Manchester Waterline Replacement Project Construction and Inspection Services, all proposals are in, and I have two action items, one for project construction and one for inspection services, services coming up soon. The Wastewater Treatment Plant E&amp;R Upgrade, optional expansion, the PER final has been received as of March 21st. CDM Smith Engineering Firm is here tonight to present the PER, their findings and recommendations. Manchester Farms Emergency Generator Replacement Installation is expected mid-April. Outside Contractor, Urban Francis. Maple Avenue Stormwater Pipe Replacement, it came to our attention that the stormwater pipe under Maple Avenue was collapsing, so we recognized this as an immediate need of repair. We did get three prices, stand balls came in, the best. They're handling this actually today and probably tomorrow, and our town staff is assisting them. Christmas Tree Park ADA Sidewalk Project, this is still expected to begin early May. In our parks, we had many hazardous trees to clean up this spring at many locations. Carroll, I'm sorry, Charlotte's Quest Nature Center, we had a couple on the walking trail. Crystal Tree Park, the baseball field, C, our field staff handled most of this with the assistance of Apex Arborist. At our parks, marching and moon operations have begun. This is our town staff. Ball Field C, late repairs completed mid-March, our contractor, Ryke Electric. And lastly, winter weather events, we had one weather event in March, and that was the 12th, it was snow. Any questions so far?
Are we going to have any more weather events?
I'm calling it, we're, we're good. I do that every year. Okay, for action items, so first, the Manchester Waterline Replacement Project, the construction portion. So we received four proposals, BA Construction at 927,369, Mid-Atlantic Utilities, 1,288,535, Rivers Construction Group, 1,470,000, Global Excavation and Utilities, 1,591,562. So as you can see, three of the four came in somewhat realistic, and with one being extremely low, we felt. So I reached out to the two lowest bidders and requested some background additional information. Without going into too much detail, Mid-Atlantic Utilities responses were off the charts, exceptional. In terms of references, we, I asked for five references for each company. Equipment and resources, they had by far a lot more, a lot more equipment and assets at their disposal. They're very resourceful and a realistic project schedule. The lower bidder, not as favorable by far. I met with DPW and Steve Kelly, we feel that in the best interest of the town is to award this to the second lowest bidder, and that would be Mid-Atlantic Utilities at 1,288,535. This is, this project is within ARPA funding, within the ARPA funding budget.
Rodney, just for the record, and for anyone that's here or listening, ARPA funding means grants from the federal government, so not coming from our current tax base, correct?
Correct.
And so we received the first of those, which kind of like came out of the whole COVID thing, and so we, there's some strings attached to that, you can only spend it on certain things.
Correct, infrastructure is, infrastructure is one of them, yes.
Right. So. So is that an action item right now, Rodney?
Correct.
Would you like to handle that now, or wait till the end of your report?
Well, now, yeah, now, I'd like to, yes. If you'd like to vote on it. And then I have one more, please.
All right. Any questions? It is the second lowest bid, typically we would go with the lowest bid, but based on the fact of the, the references and avoiding a potential issue, and staff recommendation is the Mid-Atlantic. Any questions for Rodney? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Manchester Waterline Replacement Project be awarded to Mid-Atlantic Utilities for $1,288,535.
I'll second the motion.
Motion seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, there's one, Rodney.
Okay, secondly, same project for the Inspection Services portion of this project. We received two proposals for this portion, WBCM at $60,095, Wallace Montgomery at 99,400. The town has worked with both companies and found them to be reputable companies, so I, I do not have, our staff does not have an issue with this lower bid.
Okay. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we go with the staff recommendation to award Manchester, the Manchester Waterline Replacement Project Inspection Services portion to WBCM in the amount of $60,000, $60,095.
I'll second it.
Motion seconded, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Anything final for Public Works? I'll turn it over to you, the chief, for the police report.
Yes, sir. So for the month of March, we've only handled 63 calls for service. That's, that's low. I don't, I don't remember the last time it's been that low. Twenty of which are still for outside of town, Hampstead assisting them, and Carroll County Sheriff's. So we had two Part I crimes reported. The first one was a smash and grab, there was a gentleman and his wife, they decided to go hiking down at the Charlotte's Quest, and when they went back into the woods, a subject smashed her window out, stole her credit cards. We picked him up on film down in Walmart, where he was actually cashing the credit cards, and then we got additional evidence at Bishop Garth in Westminster. So we have the picture, we have a truck, we just got to get the person identified. We had a couple call-ins, but nothing came to a solid lead yet, but we're getting close. Westminster, the same day, had a similar event in one of their parks, the exact same thing, but it was a female on that one. So, but the, when they went into Walmart, two cars met together, so we're assuming they were all together. The second one was actually a first-degree aggravated assault involving the vehicle. After an extensive investigation, and the officers gone through a lot of video footage, the two people that reported it as victims are now charged with false report. State's attorney took the evidence that we had and said enough is enough, and charged them with false report. Then through further investigation, we found out they have many of these calls in St. Mary's and Delaware as well. They're all targeting one person. So, but they didn't make it past our guys, they did a good job on the case, they had some great interviews, they got some great evidence, and we proceeded with false reports. Traffic enforcement is 165 citations and warnings. The stop sign issue, I think we got the point across, because it slowed down, the corners are drying up. Even when we come through on regular times when they really don't see us, people are really starting to slow down, I'm sure there's still a few, but compared to what it was earlier in the months, it, it has slowed down. Overdoses, overdoses are going up and down. When you compare March 22 to March 21, there was an increase by 30%, but then when you go year-to-date, there was a decrease by 30%, and that's from January to March. So it's been going up and down. The fatalities are a decrease by 41%, which is good. Fatalities have dropped so far, so that's a good sign. Manchester still has one, Hampstead has two, Sykesville zero, Tawnytown four, Mount Erie one, and Westminster 27. All the others are outside of the towns, they were just for the township. Outside of that, it's been good, ready for spring.
Yeah, for sure. Any questions for the chief? Kelly, do you want to talk a little bit about ordinance 251, 252, and 253?
So tonight I have in front of you three ordinances. The first one is 251, which sets the tax rate that we are maintaining the .216 per, oh, sorry. So 251 maintains the tax rate of 21.6 cents per $100 of assessed value. 252 actually increases the water unit charge by $3 per, per unit, and 253 increases the sewer unit charge by $4, from 36 to 40. So those are the documents I have for you, and we'll have a public hearing on this at the May 10th meeting.
Yeah, so for those that have been around a few years, either here as part of the group or sitting in with us, April is the time of the budget season where we advertise the rates, so we introduce those rates. Couple of thoughts on those, like, most taxes boil down to either being either a rate, like our, our property value, or property tax, which is at 21.6 cents per $100 of assessed value. The lowest tax rate in Carroll County, which we confirm, so that's, that's a positive thing, especially for a community that has a well-operating police department and not a lot of commercial properties to, which tend to provide more tax than, than they use, contrary to, to residences. So that's really a testament to the group that we have working for the town. We run a pretty, you know, tight budget, and try to balance taking care of our folks, providing for the needs of, of the citizens, for the things that are, that are requested for as efficiently as possible, and then not having overburdening tax. So I think we're the lowest, man, and was it Westminster's the highest, at around 56 cents, so more than double what, what ours is from a rate perspective. The, on the dollar side, it's something that we need to adjust from, and water and sewer, we do our best to have those balanced out. So we have the same cost drivers as really any business or even household with health insurance and energy and chemicals and those sort of things, so it's, it continually costs a lot of money to run the water and sewer, we don't, obviously you guys all know we don't have a reservoir here, and we need to treat water, put it back into the ground, spray it on the field, so that's something that we, we're doing our best to, to catch up. It's not quite self-funding yet, we did, we did halt any changes, I think, for two years, if I'm correct during COVID. So, yeah, that's, so we're, we're doing our best to, to catch that back up and have it not be a huge impact to, to our residents here in any one given year. So it is a change of $7 per quarter, but not on the usage side, just on the, the infrastructure side, what we call the, the unit fees. Any other thoughts on that? We, we have some additional work to do from finalizing our, our budget, so, you know, we're going to meet this here on April 27th, sort of the end of this month, so we have, we're working on our line items, but this sets the tax rate, so that's, that's out there, and everybody knows what the rates will be. All right, moving on, presentation by CDM Smith on the wastewater treatment plant E&amp;R upgrade.
While Brian's getting set up, the MAC lab is in St. Leonard, Maryland.
I, yeah, I looked.
Okay.
Have counted up. Thank you.
Is all the TVs working? I got most of them, and one in the back is causing trouble still.
There's a lot of wires back there for it to be working.
We had it going earlier, but it seems to be, start one again, I don't know. I shouldn't have turned the computer off. Yeah, my name is Brian Lubinow, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you tonight. I'm with CDM Smith, our office is in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. We've worked on a couple of smaller tasks for the Public Works Department, and we've been working with Rodney and Caleb and Delbert here for the last year or so on this study for the E&amp;R, potential E&amp;R and expansion upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. So I'm going to give you a highlight of, a few highlights of where we are, what we've been doing, where we are now, and then kind of next steps the town should consider taking. So first of all, a little bit of background on the plant. At the end of Beaver Street, the design flow is a half a million gallon per day. Parts of the plant date back to 1969, with a major upgrade in 1988. That, you can see those two circular tanks there, the first one was built in the original plant construction in 69, with the second one constructed in 1988. In addition to those, those two tanks, they, they're kind of multi-purpose secondary treatment tanks, so they have components for treatment of the biological waste of solids, and they also have solids digestion in the middle ring. Pretty common for smaller, kind of packaged wastewater treatment plants, especially of that era. In addition to that, there's UV treatment, there's chemical systems inside the building for further treatment, and then a belt filter press to remove water from the, the solid residuals that are left. As the mayor alluded to, we've got, there's two outfalls. There's the surface water discharge in the winter to George's Run, which is adjacent to the plant, and then the rest of the year, you have your surface, your subsurface discharge with the spray field, and that's from March to November generally. That, that adds an interesting wrinkle into this evaluation, those dual discharges is a, you know, a unique feature of the plant here, and it gives you some flexibility that we had to take into account. There recently has been a new NPDES, that's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination, I'm forgetting it.
System.
System, thank you, last one, I actually should have had that. Permit. It's, it's an EPA permit that's also, you know, it's issued through MDE, and it was effective, the new permit was effective March 1st. Not a whole lot changed, one thing that was interesting that's across the board, all of the new NPDES permits have an 85% reduction rate that they're implementing for total suspended solids, that's DSS, and biological oxygen demand. So really, for a typical waste that doesn't really lower the limit, it's just now, you kind of can't take credit for having a weaker strength coming in, you still have to meet the 85%. It still has the 10-milligram-per-liter nitrate requirement on the spray field, so that's for downstream monitoring wells, to make sure that there's not too much nitrates going into the groundwater from the spray field system. Two additions in that permit, one is a facilities improvement plan that's required, and that essentially comes out of some plant upsets that happened over the previous permit limit. The state is just looking for a plan on how the town The state is just looking for a plan on how um, the town plans to address those. And then there's also the Nitrate Reduction Action Plan. That's related to the spray field site and those downstream wells. They've found that some wells are increasing in nitrate level, and they want the town to develop a plan to implement in the event they continue to increase and how you're gonna handle that. So those are the highlights of that new permit. The study that we were hired by the town to do, um, it was funded through the state's Bay Restoration Fund. It included a condition assessment of what's at the plant now. So we worked with your team and went through all the whole plant to figure out how much life is left, what parts, what equipment is failing or near the end of its life, what needs to be upgraded. It also included an expansion evaluation that I'll, I'll touch on a little bit. The bulk of it was the alternatives evaluation. So it, as part of that, we looked at four different alternatives, and I'll get into those details. But basically, the first was a baseline alternative, which is just, what do you need to keep your plant meeting that permit that I just discussed for the next twenty years, um, to avoid those upsets that you saw over the last three or four years? And then alternatives two through four were, if you were to accept grant money to, um, to bring your plant up to enhanced nutrient removal require, um, standards, that's three total nitrogen and point three total phosphorus, what are the best options to do that? So you're kind of in a, in a unique situation here where we have this, you got this grant funding to do this study. You're not under a permit um, uh, stipulation that you must upgrade to meet these new permits, limits. The town was proactive enough to see this grant opportunity, um, do the study, and then evaluate, is it better to pay yourself to upgrade the plant that you have and meet the current limit? Or take the grant money in to meet a higher treatment limit? Or I, I wanna say higher treatment, a higher level of treatment, which is a lower value. So it's um, again, proactive approach by the town, you know, to be commended for seeing that grant opportunity and to, to study your plant and see what's best for the town's long-term needs. All that was summarized in a preliminary engineering report that Rodney mentioned. It was submitted to MDE in draft a few months ago, um, as well as to the town. We got comments back, we revised it, and it was issued again um, in March. So we're waiting at this point for that feedback from the state. They're still in the middle. I checked in with their engineer earlier today, and he's still in the middle of his review. Throughout that whole time, you know, we worked with the state, we worked with the Department of Public Works, the operators, finance, Steve, to get all their input to make the right decisions. Real quick here, the, the plant upsets that I referred to, this is the data, key affluent data from the plant over the last three or four years. Those kind of narrow bands you see between the blue dotted lines, vertical dotted lines, those are the periods when you're in a stream discharge, and that's when you have to meet a higher level of treatment. And where you see those green lines spike above, spike up, those are those plant upsets that are especially problematic in the stream discharge period when the requirements are, are stringent, and you don't have that spray field to kind of smooth that all out. So, um, those are what um, indic, uh, that dictated the facility improvement plan requirement. And I guess I should have said this earlier, but if anybody has any questions as we're going along, just please, please interrupt me. Otherwise, we'll certainly, we can ask questions at the end, either way. Real quick on the condition assessment, um, these, don't want to get into a whole lot of detail, but these were some of the major findings of improvements that would be necessary for the plant to continue to meet permit, um, even if you weren't going to go ahead with that E and R Enhanced Nutrient Removal Upgrade. So we found that the, you know, influent pumping station was in need of replacement. That's that, oh, I think I have a little pointer here, yeah. This, this is the, uh, a portion of that, that's uh, where the pumps are located down in there. Here are the controls back here, pretty antiquated, um, in need of replacement. The headworks, this is a picture from down in the lower level of the headworks where the screen is. There's some confined space entry concerns. The screen is down there. They have to be hauled out manually. So we, we recommended some improvements there. This picture down here in the bottom left is of the circular tanks, steel tanks. There's corrosion, so we were recommending rehabilitation of those, those tanks. Um, and then the blowers are, are pretty aged as well. That's the picture on the lower right. Just as an example of some of the more major process improvements that we would recommend. On the expansion, that was a key component, man. It was right in the name of the, of the project, was an upgrade and expansion evaluation. So we looked at the expansion, and, and as I said in the beginning, your, your plant capacity is at a half of a million gallons per day. We looked at the flows over the past uh, three years, tw- four years, and they averaged um, point three-two million gallons a day. So quite a bit under the capacity of your plant. We then looked at the comp plan and computed based on the full build-out in your most recent comp plan, what the flows would be. And that's where we came up with the va- value of, so we would add that to your base flow of point three-two, and it, it projects to a flow of point four-five-eight. So still underneath the, the current plant capacity. Because there was an expansion component worked into the project, we came up with the idea of the expansion, if you were to do one, we based it around a flow of point seven, point five-seven-five. And what that was, is it keeps your build-out flow to less than eighty percent of the plant capacity. It's not something that's recommended. You really don't want to be building all that extra capacity into your plant. It's more expensive, um, it can be more difficult to operate. And then a couple other things that, you know, the, the state isn't gonna fund the um, expansion component of it. And your permits, as far as nutrients, are still gonna be based on your current allocation. So if, you know, you end up having to treat to a higher level if you accept more flow. So for that reason, you know, we're recommending to s- to stick with the current plant capacity of a half of a million gallons per day. And pretty much everything I'll present here on after is all based on that level. The alternatives evaluation, uh, my list here, the, the evaluation criteria that we used. We came up with a scoring system where each one of those items on the left was given a point value. Where we scored, there was, it was equally weighted between cost factors, which are the first two, capital cost and the overall lifecycle cost, and then all the non, non-cost factors, which are the remaining six items. It's, you know, E, E and R removal, so the benefits of having that nutrient removal. Constructability, plant resilience, um, you know, how, how resilient is it to power outages or um, chemical shortages, or things like that. Ease of operations, we talked to the operations staff. We looked through the different processes to figure out what they felt comfortable with, what prevent, what provided the, the simplest means of operating. We had sustainability considerations, and then also footprint. We looked at how the different processes and all the different alternatives fit on the existing um, plant site. So again, now on the right side are the alternatives we looked at. I already kind of explained that non-E and R alternative to get the plant up to meeting the, the, the current permit for the next twenty years. And then I list there on alternatives two, three, and four, those are the E and R alternatives we evaluated. So the first one um, is an M, and again, we don't need to get into the, the, the real details of these, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. So I'm gonna, I just quickly describe them. MLE with a denitrification filter, um, that's just an enhanced um, process with adding some um, portions without oxygen to drive down the nitri, um, alternate three is a four-stage system. That, that drives the, the phosphorus removal in addition to the one that I mentioned in alternative two, with a cloth media filter on the end. So that cloth media is what collects um, the, the particles which have the, the phosphorus in them. And then the last one, alternative four, was that same four-stage system, but with an MBR, a membrane bioreactor on the end. So that's basically lots of small um, membrane, tube membranes, very small pore size, where the wastewater at, at the end is pulled through those membranes, and it, again, filters out all of the particles which have the, the phosphorus nutrients in them. So the next um, sheet in your handout shows that scoring matrix that I described. I'll highlight a couple of things here, just to not, not go through all the scoring, but just point out a couple of things of note. On the capital cost, obviously, alternative one, where you're not meeting, um, you know, the lower limits, it's the cheapest. You're just kind of repairing what you have out there, bringing it up to current standards. So that's how, why it got the, the highest score of thirty. The other scores are all ratioed based on the actual cost projections for those. I mean, you can see two, three, and four, all very closely scored. The costs of them really were pretty similar. Life cycle, we took the same approach, but it's looking at um, operational costs and maintenance costs of those systems. And again, alternative one scored the highest, so we gave it the highest maximum points. And that's pretty simple because it's a, it's a simpler system. It's, doesn't cost as much money to operate. There's not as many parts and pieces and chemicals and things to keep it going. So that's why, again, and then the, the scores for two, three, and four were all ratioed based on that cost. Then we get into all the non-cost um, factors. So the E and R benefits is one I want to point out. Obviously, all the ones that meet E and R, they get the full fifteen points. Alternative one, which doesn't, gets a zero. After that, I'm just gonna kind of pick out a few things to point out. Plant resiliency, um, we scored alternative three the highest with the maximum of ten out of ten. And that's because that cloth media filter really is a fairly simple um, process, especially when compared to that, the MBR option that I described with those membranes, with the little pores that requires a lot of cleaning processes, more pumps, just more to it. So, um, the simpler gets the higher resiliency score. Same kind of applies for ease of operations. And on the footprint, last, last item there, you know, the, the alternative one is all within the existing plant footprint, so it gets a high, high score. We're pretty much just rehabbing what you already have. But bottom line, alternative three ended up with the highest score of seventy-eight. So that's essentially what, how we came up with our recommendation to proceed with alternative three. So this is just a little more detail about that alternative three. You can see that four-stage tank, it's got anoxic zones, which is, has no oxygen being added to the wastewater. Aerobic zones, which is kind of what you do already. And that four-stage process is what's, what drives the biological nutrient removal. And at the very end of it, that last um, blue tank on the right, that's the, that's the cloth media filter, which filters out the fine phosphorus particles. On the bottom is the, is a blow-up of what that cloth media filter looks like. Those individual discs have that cloth media, and it, the wastewater is pulled through those filters and leaves on the right side of that figure. That's where that, the phosphorus is, is driven out. So a couple of, a key advantages there, that system can be turned off pretty easily. There's bypass piping around it, close a couple valves, open another valve, that system's bypassed. You could consider doing that in the season when you're not stream discharging, pretty simply. Not a whole lot to go on. It provides some backup in case you have upsets for, for more traditional um, pollutant removal. And again, it's pretty straightforward to operate. Um, this is a, a potential layout on the site of, of how the, the plant would look, um, if you were to go with that option. A couple of things I'll point out. One is that one of those existing tanks, this existing round steel tanks would be rehabilitated and modified to be used as a digester. Right now, just that little center ring is your digester. You'd be able to have all that volume of one of those tanks as a digester. The main treatment tanks are up in the upper right, those that kind of gray and orange um, boxes. Those are the ma- the new tanks where the, the, the treatment would take place. You would need new clarifiers. Those are those blue circles. Again, those are, those are components that are currently all in those multi-purpose round tanks that you have. And then there'd be a new building to house new blowers, chemical feed systems, um, electrical components. And you may be thinking now like, oh wait, but don't we have a building right there? Yes, that's where, that's where your um, maintenance um, building or um, storage, I guess is right, Rodney? What's, is that correct? Storage and maintenance in there? Storage and parking, okay. So that's that area that kind of at the top of the site. So we're showing a new maintenance building, storage building, um, up further on the site to replace that, that space. But they're really, because of steep slopes, because of how close you are to the stream, that's really the only available space to uh, to fit the new tankage in. So that's what the new site would, would look like. Now we get into costs. So these are the costs that were used to develop those, that scoring matrix. Point a couple of things out. First of all, alternative one, that's the baseline, fix the plant you have, alternative. That bottom line, well, let me, let me build it up. So we start with a, a raw construction cost. We have a construction group that provides those estimates based on real bids that we have in-house. From that, it gets built up to include things like the, the general conditions costs of a contractor, permitting costs, overhead and profit. We've also included a pretty large thirty percent contingency, because this is a really, you know, concept level. We want to use a big number there to make sure you're not surprised later. All of the costs also had a six percent annual midpoint of construction inflation, uh, contingency value applied to them. Six percent is a, is a big number to use for that. But given the current inflation that we're all experiencing right now in everything, as was described earlier, that's what we thought was appropriate to use. And we're also projecting that to the midpoint of the construction, which wouldn't be until uh, some point in the middle of two thousand twenty-five. So it ends up being a pretty large number when you account for that level of um, escalation. We've also included twenty percent project costs. That's to include engineering, inspection, legal fees, things like that. Those were applied to all those costs for all the alternatives. Alternative one is the, is the one that would be fully town-funded. And then the other alternatives two through four all have um, MDE grant, Bay Restoration Fund applied to it. So that the state has a process by which certain things are funded and certain things are not. Essentially, the easy way of thinking of it is anything that's to drive down to meet that E and R limit, it's funded a hundred percent. But there's components of this project that aren't, like your belt filter press is in need of replacement. They don't generally pay for that type of thing. So when you, by item by item, we went through and figured out what would be eligible, what wouldn't be eligible, what would be partially eligible. And we came up with a tentative percentage of seventy-six percent would be grant-eligible. That's very tentative. Um, that's something that will be worked on, assuming this project moves forward, with the state all the way until the, the bids are opened and the construction starts. But at seventy-six percent, if you take alternative three, which is our recommended alternative, the town share is six point seven million dollars. So if you want to think of it from a um, the town share component, the, the numbers to be comparing would be the four point seven-five for alternative one, and the six point seven million for alternative three, which is the recommended um, E and R alternative.
Is that seventy-six percent conservative? Is that a conservative estimate for it?
It is, although I will, I will comment that today, just today, like this afternoon, I got an email from the state reviewer that commented that there was one, um, the belt filter press, actually. We had used a twenty percent share, and he was commenting that um, perhaps with the way that we calculate the solids generation that go to that belt filter press, that might not be that funded to that degree. So, in that particular item, I would say that it could, it could go down a little bit. But overall, that's a pretty small piece of the project, so maybe it falls to seventy-five percent. So, um, yeah, we tried to be realistic. But I would say overall, I mean, we have that thirty percent contingency as it is a, and the twenty percent project costs are, are large, um, as well- the twenty percent project costs are large, as well as the escalation of midpoint, or all these layers of contingency that we've built in. So you can see the state really is funding a large portion of that, and I just, I looked that up, and in their current report, the Bay Restoration Fund, I thought it was interesting, has funded over one point four billion dollars in plant improvements since 2004 across the state. So that was an interesting number, and I'm sure you're all aware, I mean, they focused on the large plants first, and then now they're getting down to the more minor plants.
May I ask a question? We may not know, we may not know this answer. In any of these options or alternatives, is there gonna be a lag, or are we gonna be able to continue to provide the service that we're providing now, or are we going to have a breakdown at any point in the process where we're stuck not being able to provide the services to the level that we are at this point in the process, if we were to choose any of these options?
Right, good question. Two thoughts come to mind, and one that I skipped over in this slide. The fourth one down, constructability and the term that we use that everyone always asks questions, MOPO, Maintenance of Plant Operations, which is exactly what you're talking about. So the scoring we gave there speaks to the difficulty of alternative one. If you're just gonna upgrade the plant that you have, it's difficult, so that's why that one was scored low. Actually, the other options where you can sort of build your new plant over here and keep your existing one running, with some, obviously, it's not that simple, they score So I think the direct answer to your question is yes, I mean, that would be part of the design process. And then the other thought is, if you were to go the E and R route, you would enter into an agreement with the state to meet a lower limit, and they would assign a timeline to that, at which point, you know, with some interim milestones, design finished, bidding, construction finished. So they would work with you to establish that that limit would only start when the construction was finished. So you wouldn't, you would likely be held to your current permit limits until that time.
Okay.
Sometimes they even give you an interim agreement, or interim standard, which reflects the complexity of operating a plant in the middle of a construction project. So in some cases, they'll give you a limit that is actually higher than your current limit during the construction period, but they would have to look at the complexities with your plant to see whether that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Kind of started getting into this a little bit, but the next step in project schedule, so the, this is a possible project schedule, if kind of going, if things were to kind of kick off now, as far as, you know, you were decided that you wanted to progress with the upgrade in the near term. So planning, that MDE coordination, this, kind of this quarter, moving into preliminary design by the end of the year, final design and permitting next year, and moving through bidding and award and finishing construction sometime in the year of 2025. And that's where we came up with that, the value that we use for the midpoint of construction being in 2025. So just to get an idea of about how this could progress. Next steps, MDE is currently reviewing that PDR, our Preliminary Engineering Report, so I would expect to hear back from them within a week or two, with if there's any kind of final edits we need to make. I know, I know we, there's a town certification process, so I know there's gonna be a few, at least a few small revisions, we'll see what other comments they have. And then there's that grant eligibility coordination, where you're working with the state to see what is that percent, is it seventy-six, is it seventy-seven, is it seventy-four? And what's the timelines that you might be working under? That kind of coordination would happen. Oh, this last point here is an important one as well. So I mentioned at the beginning, those Facility Improvement Plan and the nutrient, I'm sorry, Nitrate Reduction Action Plan. If you were to move ahead with this project, both of those plans, to some degree, become mute. If you have a whole new plant, it's not like, we're really worried about the interim improvements to make this plant function, as well as you're taking all the nitrogen out before it even goes up to the spray field. So your nitrate reduction plan becomes pretty simple. It's like, we're taking all the nitrate out down here at the plant, so there's really nothing to do up at the spray field. So those plans become simplified greatly if you decide you want to proceed with an E and R solution. Yeah, and then solicitation of proposals for that design step would be another next step. So Steve, I know you have some experience in going through this process with the, with the state, I don't know if you have anything to add to what I just laid out, or?
Well, all. It doesn't happen over right. And here, you know, we could be working with some RKA funding, we could be working with some other grant funding, and that all play the part of the, the big thing, and I think Brian, his group did a nice job trying to beat down MDE as much as we could to get them to fund as much as they would. Ryan, I have one question. If you could go back to page eleven, I know the Director of Finance has a question, so alternative three, so is it twenty?
Twenty-five million, five hundred thousand, is that the total project cost? But then, I believe we were looking at our share, is that right, Kelly?
Yeah, twenty-five-five.
Mm-hmm.
It's point seven-six.
Mm.
Or?
The bean counters at work.
No, that's good to take a...
So I...
Does the math not work? Is that what, I don't know?
And I'm sure there's something in the formula.
Yes.
I have no doubt. So, because when I was doing it, I'm like, well, twenty-four percent of the twenty-five-five is not quite six point seven, so I just didn't know what actually else was in there.
Yeah, let me look into that. No, that's, that's a good point. And what it may be, it may be in that project cost component, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah, let me look into that and get back to you. No, it's a good catch. Any other questions?
I'd like to add a couple of things. First, thanks to all our staff, this has been a long, tough road to get to this point. Thanks to CDM Smith and Steve, Kelly, Caleb Delbert. Also, this state funding may not be available down the road, just keep that in mind.
And to follow up on what Rodney said, and not only the state funding might not be available, when I started all this out, I kind of laid out the argument that alternative one meets your current needs, and that four point seven-five million would come out of your pocket and, to meet those current permits. And you're under no permit driver now to meet a lower limit. But that's not to say that in the future, that the state lowers the limits and this grant funding isn't available. So that's an important point that I, I don't think I made it strongly enough, but that's, you know, if you go with the E and R upgrade option, it limits that future risk of a lower limit being applied to your permit that's not funded to this degree.
It's probably not just a risk, it's probably a likelihood.
The way things started was, when they started getting into the Bay Restoration fees that we all pay and all the residents pay, they went with the larger plants first and then worked their way down to the smaller plants. So, yeah, so I believe the residents of Manchester in a quarter, if I'm not mistaken, Kelly, I think they pay in Bay Restoration fee around twenty-some thousand, is that correct?
We could have checked every quarter about twenty thousand dollars to Contour.
Right.
So we're...
Yep, so you're looking well over a hundred thousand dollars a year that goes to the Bay Restoration fee that the, you know, our residents are paying.
And to date, have funded projects elsewhere, all those, the larger plants that you referred to?
Correct, all those funds, that is correct.
Yeah. Two thousand five.
Yeah, that sounds about right, yeah.
So one other clarifying question. Keeping in mind that our original system is fifty-plus years old, and we upgraded thirty-four years ago, we got about twenty years on the original before we had on, had to add on. Then you had said about, if we went with option one, it would get us through the next twenty years of permits, meet existing permit for the next twenty years. What could we anticipate, say, option three, getting us? Like, if we fix what we have, is it gonna buy us that twenty years and then we're down the road having to do another process like this?
Right.
Or are we going to be able to maintain, I would assume we'd be able to maintain a different option for a longer time, and do we have like an idea of what that, we would anticipate it would work for?
Right. A lot of times for these types of improvements, if you're a design life of something, the generic answer is to say it's twenty years, but in all reality, as you learn from your existing plant, like if someone was standing here fifty years ago saying, you've got to build this plant, they would have told you this single, that had a lifetime of twenty years. Well, you, here you are fifty-five years later and you're still using it. So the design lifetime often for these things is stated as twenty years.
Okay.
But, yeah, you would expect it to last longer. But really, the, the plant upgrade, two through four, is all about meeting the lower limit as well as providing something new, where the option one just kind of, it eliminates the issues that have been causing the plant upsets that, and you have some more potential for major things, like those tanks, the corrosion on the tanks and items like that. So, yeah, twenty years, but it should last longer than that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. So before we go into the playground piece, so a couple of ladies from Charlotte's Quest come in to be sworn in. I saw you try to sneak in. Do you want to, do you want to be sworn in now?
Sure.
Okay. If you don't mind coming up, then... Over here, you're on camera over here, I think.
There we go, hey!
Yeah. So I'll read this, you just state your name at the same time and then say I did it at the end, and we'll do a couple signatures, and you're welcome to hang with us, we'll be on your way. So, aye, state your name.
Rebecca Strong.
Debbie Thomas.
Do affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you will be faithful and will bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland, will support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that you will, to the best of your skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Manchester Parks Foundation Board Member according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do.
I do.
All right, here, I'll sign these and then if you want to bring them over. Twelve. All right, there you go. And if you don't mind bringing them over to Kelly, you can sign them and she can sign them and then you're good.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion of inclusive playground equipment purchase using fifty-two thousand dollar grant from CCP.
Yes, so, just, oh, I thought that was a microphone, sorry. So we received word that we were able to get funding from Community Parks and Playground for fifty-two thousand dollars for updating equipment in Christmas Street Park. So we also have in the current budget, twenty-two thousand to replace, to get additional equipment in Christmas Street Park. So when you add those together, we've got, you know, seventy-four thousand. We, David Brown and Raymond Wake and so forth, have met with the people that did our inclusive playground, Hail's Wish, and the gentleman came out, he did measurements, he came up with some options for us, and using our existing walkway so that it's actually adjacent to an ADA sidewalk. And so what we have come up with is a project for, we're gonna take out the climber right here and put the piece of equipment that you see in front of you, that's what we're recommending that we go with, to use the funds that we're gonna get from, through DNR, Program Open Space, and the monies we have budgeted for another piece of equipment.
So Kelly, this is an action item for tonight?
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad you clarified CCP is Community Parks, not China, right?
Right.
Because I'm not even gonna call for a vote if that's the case.
Yeah. And we're, we're able to get it through, the company works with Landscape Structures, and they are in the co-op that we have, that we were able, the same co-op we were able to get, Musco Lighting, we got six percent discount from being in the co-op.
And this is, the twenty-two thousand is fiscal year twenty-two money?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any more questions? Everybody get a chance to take a look at this? Any questions or concerns moving forward?
No.
We have a motion to move forward with the proposal for the inclusive playground equipment for seventy-two, one fifty-two, twenty-six, being funded with a combination of grant from Carroll County Parks at fifty-two thousand and twenty-two thousand, which is budgeted for this type of project in our fiscal year twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the purchase of the playground equipment using the Community Parks and Playground grant funding, the amount of fifty-two thousand and the budgeted amount of twenty-two thousand.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, Councilwoman Howe. Any other discussion? What was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. A lot of projects in the works. Anybody sign, the sign-in sheet to speak? I thought you had it, Mark, I thought you're main, you're owning the sheet now. Is there anybody that is here that did not sign in that would like to speak? Was that a yes from Delbert?
Yeah, Delbert wants to.
All right, we're hearing, if there's no one, we'll move into committee reports. Councilman Cooneyo.
Thanks. We, the Planning and Zoning Committee did meet a couple of times last month. Our normal scheduled meeting was short, we reviewed some of the updates to the Maverick One solar project, still waiting on some outstanding items and should be coming up this upcoming meeting. And as Steve mentioned earlier, we had a two-hour meeting with some folks from Equine Meadows, went through several items that were outstanding on that project, still some outstanding items on stormwater management, and which we should be progressing though pretty good, so that's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Miller.
So we are on track for Banner City, the application is due May twenty-sixth, and all of the pieces have been completed, or I'm just collecting the data.
Very good. Councilman Bocelli.
The next meeting of the North Carroll Business Alliance Group is April twenty-first, twelve-thirty to one-thirty at Dutch Corner. The guest speaker will be Senator Justin Reedy, the membership speaker will be our very own Councilman Richardson. Something interesting, on May seventh, at Spargo's, they are holding a Kentucky Derby viewing party at four-thirty. I don't have any more facts other than that, but it sounds kind of fun, they're gonna watch the race and have some kind of gala with the hats and everything, as far as I remember. That's it.
Okay, that's on May seventh, it's a Derby.
May seventh.
Councilwoman Howe.
I attended the Parks meeting last night. They had an egg hunt just for the members of, you know, of Charlotte's Quest, and they said it was an amazing success. We had eighty-five kids sign up for it, which was really great. Some of the egg... Some of the activities that are going on, we have First Friday Fires. That happens monthly and it is members only from seven to ten P.M. Second Sunday Hike is a monthly event. Right now, it's a self-guided tour and that is from one to three P.M. And that's open to anyone, no cost. And then we also have a family campout scheduled for May twenty-first. It's thirty-five dollars a family, which covers your smores. And it used to be they would give you donuts in the morning or stuff, so, and that's it.
Very good. Couple of reminders coming up. We do have a budget work session Wednesday, April twenty-seventh. So everybody who's here, make sure, put that on the calendars if you're able to attend. Kind of coming down the home stretch here, just do a Kentucky Derby reference of budget season. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May tenth, due at seven-thirty. Any else for this group? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.